Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Austin is unable to be here, so as vice chair or vice president, I'm filling in. So bear with me. Sharon is going to help me with some of the things like public comment. Um, I guess everybody should, I should make sure everybody can hear me and they can be heard. Um, Nat?
Yes, I'm here.
And Lee?
I'm here.
And Farah?
Here.
Okay.
What about Eugene?
And Eugene?
I am here.
Good. Glad you're there because you're taking notes. I'm not taking notes. Okay, changes and additions to the agenda. Sharon, you said there might be some changes. Are those the additional motions?
I'll be talking about the executive order. The IMLS executive order.
The president's report.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have public comment and Sharon's going to help me with this because I've never done it before.
You want to do the minutes first?
Oh, sure. Minutes of February 27th, 25. Any corrections, additions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, great, thank you. Okay, um, okay, Farah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
And Eugene?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, now, public comment.
So if anyone would like to speak, we have eight attendees in the audience. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, your virtual hand, and I will let you in one at a time. Okay. I am seeing five, I'm seeing five hands. And we'll start with Omar Matar. I will let you in. Hello.
Hi, how are you? I want to learn more about this stuff and this is my first meeting. Can you guys tell me more? I'm really interested in libraries.
Um, we ordinarily, we do not respond to public comment. If you're interested in the library, there's information on the website. Or you could come in and talk with someone.
Oh, I'm very, very sorry.
That's okay. That's okay, we're very happy that you're interested, but usually in public comment, people make comments, but we don't have time to reply to all of them. All right, thank you for your comment, Omar.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Uh, Lee, would you like me to, no, you've let, okay. Next, I'm going to let Hilda in.
I have two questions. One is, the quarter ended this afternoon at four o'clock. And I would like to know what the bottom line of the endowment was at the end of the third quarter, also three minutes ago. Somebody should be able to post that, it should be public record. My second question is, I would like to know exactly how much cash you have in the bank toward the new expansion. That's what, what is due cash, not, not the pledges, but the cash. And that should also be a matter of public record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Hilda.
Next is Jeff.
Thank you. Yes, back when Bob Pam was treasurer, he used to insist that the trustees produce a report, a monthly report, that not only listed what has been brought in by the Capitol campaign, but also what expenses have been incurred. I think that's also, you have a memorandum of agreement with the friends to produce that information. So I would like to know what expenses have been incurred, incurred by the Capitol campaign. Has it been $400,000? Well, it was back last fall. What is it up to now? Is it $500,750,000 or just what is it? And I presume that gets subtracted from funds raised and that can be remitted to the town. It would be really, it's important that you report that because it affects the town's the burden on the town to spend toward the expansion project. And I think it's important to report that to the public since the public is paying quite a bit towards the expansion project. So please report the fundraising expenses and also explain how you plan to cover the library share, the outstanding $7 million of funds that need to be raised. We've heard that it involves a loan or from a bank or mass development, but we have no idea what the limits are and what the effect on the endowment is. So I'd be very curious to hear what that is.
Thank you, Jeff.
And next, we have Arlie.
Good afternoon. Um, so at the last town council meeting, the town manager said that if this didn't go forward, the, uh, you know, money that had been given by the MBLC would have to be paid back. And that surprised me partly because earlier in the year, town manager said it, the case could be made for that to be forgiven. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is, you know, this money was given by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to the Jones Library and all the money has been spent for the library. So why is the town having to pay this back? On your sheet about the funding sources, it says that the Capitol campaign has over four and a half million dollars. So if it came to that, it seems it would be the fair thing, the kind thing, the ethical thing, to pay that money back because the town, as we know, is struggling mightily financially these days. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlie.
And next, we have Pamela.
Hi, everybody, Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. Some of my questions already were answered, but there's clearly interest in the, the financial situation as we move forward toward getting a contract signed. And I think everyone is just sort of holding tight and, and hoping to, to hear good discussion and, and good facts upon which to base information. So the value of the endowment was one of my questions. And then how much money is in hand today is also of, of high interest to me. Just thinking about what the town will be faced with. So would appreciate if there's any opportunity within your meeting structure to discuss that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And that is everybody.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sharon, for helping me. Okay, the president's report, Sharon is going to report on the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which the president vacated with an executive order.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you a pre, a very brief overview about things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. The things that are happening federally that is, is going to affect things statewide and locally. The first is Trump's executive order number 14238, which targets federal funding to libraries and museums through the Institute of Museum and Library Services, or IMLS. The president has determined that the IMLS is unnecessary. What this means for library services in Massachusetts and Amherst, it's really still unraveling. The worst case scenario is the MBLC, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, will lose $3.6 million in federal funding. And that funding is used for staff. Thirteen of their 23 staff members, that those positions are funded either in part or in totality by this federal funding. It's our statewide databases, it's the Commonwealth Catalog, which is used for interlibrary loan. It's summer reading program across the state. Statewide ebook and e-audio book, that program, as well as the E-Rate program. These aren't insignificant issues. Thankfully, people are fighting. The IMLS board itself is actively fighting along with the senate members, the Massachusetts Library Association, the Massachusetts School Library Association, the Massachusetts Library System, and the Mass Center for the Book. Voters and residents also can help fight back. There are a handful of websites where you can go and it'll get you, get, give you more information, including everylibraryinstitute.org, the MBLC and ALA, ALA, the American Library Association. And so what we are doing right now, library staff, we are working on creating a page on our website so that folks will be able to go to that and, and learn more about what's going on and click on links and shout from the rooftops how bad this is. The second, the second disappointment that came yesterday, we received a letter from the United States Department of Homeland Security telling us that effective immediately, so effective yesterday at 5:00 PM, our DHS grant, Department of Homeland Security grant, which is allowing us to teach English to some senior citizen, English language learners, has been terminated. So the original grant, which was awarded to us in 2022, was for a little over $120,000. And it was set to end this fall, the fall of 2025. The worst case scenario is that we lose about $66,000. The best case scenario is that we lose about $39,000. And it's, we're, we're unpacking exactly how much money it is that we're set to lose. There's, there's money in transit to be, it's a reimbursement program. And so anyways, it's somewhere between 39 and 66. And either way, what hurts the most are, are these students, these 11, there's 11 people in this class from various countries all around the world. They're aged 63 to 84, with little to no formal education. And we have to tell them that this class is ending. So again, we'll be adding this information to the website so that people can speak out. And we'll certainly let, let you know more as we get more and more information as it comes to us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sharon, for providing that and providing all the paperwork, the various things from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners and the, the senate letter, the bipartisan senate letter that went to the acting head of the institute, which he came over from someplace in the Labor Department. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sharon? All right, um, now.
Farah has a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see on, you'll have to just speak up because I can't see your, fit your.
Okay. Lee, I don't know if you had your hand up first.
No, I did, but I defer to everybody. Carry on.
Oh, no, you go first, Lee.
Can I remember? I mean, so it, it sounds, this is like a time limited grant. It wasn't going to go beyond a little bit. So I'm just trying to imagine if there's some way we could backstop it so it wouldn't have to be canceled. I have no ideas, but just a thought.
We're working on that possibility. I mean, that would be, that would be lovely. But if the number is as high as $66,000, that's a lot of money. But we're, we've got all our options open right now. Thank you for asking.
Thanks.
So Sharon, I've just been really distraught ever since I got your message yesterday because it feels like every day we're getting, hearing more and more of this stuff. And I just, I can't wrap my head around some of these cuts, especially to the library programs, because I know how important this ESL program and all the funding that we get for, for programs like this, how important they are. So a couple of, I mean, I know Lee sort of asked this, but how soon are you going to feel this? And I guess the bigger picture is, I'm probably going to be on a, like a rant right now because I'm just, especially as an immigrant, I'm just feeling how, how terrible this situation is, you know, on so many levels. And like every day you're here and I just keep thinking that, you know, I've been thinking about the project a lot too, the last few days. I know we've had some good news, but I know we're still waiting for, you know, all the i's and t's to be dotted and crossed. I'm just like, I'm just hoping that we as a town and as a community can continue to, to realize how crucial this project is, especially now when there's all these cuts going on, on every level. How so many programs are going to be cut? And how much fewer resources they're going to be available for those who need it the most? So all those people here, like in our town, all the privileged people out there who think that we don't need this because we have to preserve, I mean, I'm all for historical preservation, but we don't need it because of, we need to preserve every little bit of history. I think what's more important is what we can do for our community. And I'm just like, all I'm just saying is, I want to say thank you for all the hard work you've done and everyone, people on the Capitol campaign, you know, all of you, but especially, I just really, really hope that this project goes through because it is so crucial to so many and especially people with fewer resources in this town, especially to our children, to our teens, to future generations. And I just hope that we can like hold on to the funding however you can. So thank you and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Farah. I think we share your frustration and concern on many levels. Okay, and I unfortunately can't see if you've raised your hand. For some reason, everybody's cut off on my screen, so just speak up if you want to speak. Thank you. Okay, now, committee reports. Library Building Committee, Sharon's going to report on the signed MOA and some other developments.
Yeah, I actually, I don't have a lot of specifics. We're, we're still in limbo. What I do know is that section 106 is complete. We do have a signed memorandum of agreement. It is, it's been advertised, the environmental assessment is complete. So that's out there as well. So there's a waiting period. And this is where I, I start to lose the specifics. There's like, I, I want to say there's a 15-day local and a 15-day federal. But i-if you look at the advertisement, which is in the, it's in the trustee packet as well as having been emailed to you all, it talks about next, uh, what am I trying to say? Starting to be able to draw down the HUD money as well as the NEH money. And so next up, we'll be signing a contract with a general contractor and then getting disbursements, two disbursements from the MBLC. And that'll be like, I want to say $5.5 million, give or take. So those are the things that will be going on between now and the end of April. I'm happy to answer questions, but I don't know a lot more than that.
Does anyone have any questions?
Farah?
Sorry. Sharon, I, I know these things are moving along and, I mean, we still have a few more steps. But any, while this is happening, any, any thoughts, any progress on interim locations? Or is that not even in the works? Or are you sort of working on that simultaneously?
It's, it's kind of been, been worked on simultaneously, yeah, so stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Farah. Thank you, Sharon, anything else? That's, okay. All right, um, next is Buildings and Facilities Committee, Farah?
Let's see, I, we met on the fourth and it was during the snowstorm. So there was some talk, George had talked about, you know, talk with the town to see when town, when the storms happen, who's cleaning up the branches? And I think there was talk of the town doing that at the branches, right, Sharon?
Correct.
Because for a minute, I'm looking at my notes and I'm like, tree branches or the library branches? Okay, so there was that and there was something about the hole and the oil tank was removed, but the DPW did testing and everything was okay. And the other thing George had said was there was an uptake, uptick in graffiti in the bathrooms. But they can't, I mean, they haven't even caught, they haven't caught anyone. And we did ask about the person who was checking to see if cars were not locked in the parking lot on the library. And I think that situation was sort of under control, right? Nothing had happened since our meeting in January. I think that's all I can, um, I can remember from that meeting. Was, was there anything I, I missed, Sharon? I know the allocations are up to date.
Yeah, that's all set.
Big leak. You had sent an email about the big leak and the Spanish books being destroyed.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we found more mold, we had to throw away, it was 32 books altogether that were badly moldy. You know, it's the, the atrium has these drains that just don't, don't work or leaky. And so as the water comes in through the center of the building, it, it is destroying the ceiling, it's destroying the columns and it, and it's, it's making its way down to the basement and it's, it's destroying the walls there as well. So the, the mold situation is, is serious and thankfully, we're going to have a building project and it will take care of the problem. Well, thank you.
As mold is a serious problem.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Farah, anything else? That's it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Farah. Okay, Development Committee, Lee?
Okay, a lot of what I would ordinarily report has already been reported by Sharon. And the information's already in the packet. So I just want to underscore that, as Sharon said, the 106 review is complete. It's been signed off on by the town, the library, and the Mass Historical Commission, for which we are very grateful. Consulting parties are free to sign on and as far as I can tell from having looked, seven of the 13 have already signed on. And we're very optimistic therefore in the context of complete chaos on the part of the federal government, that our federal funds remain intact for a whole lot of reasons having to do when they were actually appropriated, that they may not be assailable even under the viciousness of the current regime. Well, this would come up later under budget and investment, I could wait, but I, I can't report on today's endowment numbers. I mean, we, I, I mean, I can't report at the moment because we normally don't take the pulse of the endowment on a daily basis. But I could get to that when we get to the Budget and Investment Committee. So that's kind of where we are. The annual fund is up and the Capitol campaign chugs along at over $10 million secured.
Is the annual fund sort of on target?
It's, it's above, we're, we're over where we were.
Last year.
Last year, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great.
And that's in, that's in the budget minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to put on my Chair of the Personnel Planning and Policy Committee. And you have in front of you Sharon's goals. We discussed them at our meeting on Tuesday and made some changes and additions. So these need to be approved. So I guess as Chair of the Committee, I will make a motion that we approve Sharon's FY25 goals.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Any questions? Comments? Okay, all right.
I'll just comment, but thank you for the Committee for going through this process. And I just want to say that, that there are so many challenges facing the library, whether it is kind of the current, you know, budget that we have coming up, the federal cuts and the chaos that comes with that. So many moving pieces as well as the building project going forward. So just want to read, reiterate, you know, what a great job Sharon is doing trying to navigate all these challenges. And it is just amazing to me that one person can be on top of all of these kind of three-dimensional chess, you know, potential disasters facing us. So thank you to the Committee for working through all of these goals and to Sharon for being the right person at the right time to step up and, and help us get through all of this.
I, I agree with you, Nat, well said.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yes, thank you, Sharon, that's right. Okay, um, we need to vote on the goals, Lee?
Yes.
Okay, um, Eugene?
You're muted.
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Farah? And I vote yes. So those goals are in place and they will be used to guide Sharon and they will be used as part of her evaluation process. Okay, as part of the, I will ask Farah to report on the Jedi Committee. She has anything to report?
Oh, no, we had to reschedule our March meeting. We're meeting on the 11th next, at 11:30 AM.
At April 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Budget and Investment Committee.
Okay, as I think I said, I can't report on today's endowment numbers because I didn't know the question would be asked. But I would like to say, I wish I could quote Nat exactly from our Budget Committee meeting, but it was something, well, first of all, even I can say this, we deal with a rolling average over time. So today's perturbations, whatever they are, are not going to hit us for some time out. And I'm sure when Nat speaks, he can be more precise than I can be. And then there are simply two motions, I'm not sure where they might come. Nat has one he wants to make. And we discussed the FY26 budget at our meeting. And the Budget and Investment Committee moved to endorse that budget and to make the recommendation to the trustees to endorse that budget. Inside, right, inside that endorsement, again, is all kinds of confusion. It appears that the town appropriation is going to be the 4% increase and we're going to stay with that. It appears that the town appropriation is gonna be the 4% increase and we're gonna stay with that. So, that's good. But as Sharon said, the federal government may send down directives that might have an impact not directly on us. We have not risen to the level of support where DOGE is coming after the Jones Library specifically. But in their interest in doing in education and anything that might educate the populace, their actions might affect and their hatred of anybody who did not vote for the current regime statewide. Things might affect us and therefore Sharon might need to recalculate the budget. And in addition, the budget is predicated on the success of the building project going forward. And if that should not happen, again, things might need to be recalculated. But within that, within those parameters of uncertainty, the Budget Committee, again, thinks Sharon's done an amazing job and we want to endorse the budget that she has produced.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
Well, I don't know, I don't know when that's, maybe we should wait until Sharon makes it to you and then I'll make that motion, or I can make it now. I don't, I'm trying to channel.
No, I think you can make the, you make the motion.
Okay, I move that after Sharon presents the entire budget and you all have the opportunity to understand it, I move that the trustees endorse the FY26 budget that Sharon will be proposing.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No, I'm happy to give you a brief overview. The highlights are, it does include a 4% increase to the town appropriation. The total operating budget is $3,088,672. It includes a 4% draw rate from the endowment. We're using all of our state aid and our 80% from the Friends. Many thank yous to the Friends. We couldn't do it without the Friends and and the donations, people who donate to the library. We just, we thank you so much. It speaks directly to and affects directly the quality of life in Amherst. So, our 80% is about $90,000. The Friends directed, their 20% is about $30,000. And from the Woodbury Fund, we're looking at about $26,000. Expenses include, it is a 12.9% increase to the health insurance benefits, which is killing everybody. It does include a 2% increase to the materials expenditure. And it does, as Lee said, assume that we will be in an interim space. And the total programming, it includes about $30,000 worth of programming plus the ESL. I guess the one piece of, the further comment I would like to make it is it has to do with, you know, the library's budget in general. And for several years, since 2019, the library has had access to three full-time positions that we cannot afford to fill. And we have not filled those positions since 2019, since these three folks had retired. Wait a minute, there's noise outside. Let me close the window. Okay, and this hurts us. This hurts the library, it hurts the staff. It prevents us from holding programs that we would like to hold. We're not meeting the demand. And so, I guess, I just wanted to say this now so that it's, so that people understand so that people understand that these health insurance increases hurt the library, the town appropriation is not enough. And we are grateful for every dime that we do get from the town of Amherst. And I guess I'll just stop there unless you all have other things to say about it. Lee? You're muted.
I put some of that in the minutes of the Budget Committee. I meant to mention it and I forgot. I think it's important to get this in the record because once the building project goes forward, when you're putting together a budget, if you want to use some of the money available to you for positions, those are not added positions. Because this has, again, been a piece of contention. And I know about this from my former life. These are not added positions. This is how you would allocate your funds to adequately staff back to full-time. And it may not, it may not work out that you can do that. But if you can do that, it should not ever be construed as additional positions beyond what the current building needed.
Yeah, there are vacant positions.
Exactly.
They exist and they have not been filled.
Exactly.
They're not new positions.
Exactly. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Sharon, how much, like, would anything be affected by the building project and by the interim location? Your budget?
No, it takes it into account. For example, we're not gonna have to service elevators. For example, we're not gonna have to repair an old HVAC system. So, this budget takes that into account.
Okay, right, just checking. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any other questions? Okay, are we prepared to vote on approving the library's FY26 budget? Okay, Lee?
Yes.
Eugene?
Muted.
I'm taking notes. I keep getting to do that. Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Farah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, we have, the budget is approved. Okay, Lee, do you want to continue with your report?
Well, I would now, I would just now turn it over to Nat.
Oh, great. So, this is a motion I will make, which is in light of current market volatility and to reduce the risk in the library's investments, I move that the asset allocation guidelines in our current investment management policies, which were amended as of June 15, or June 4, 2015, should be suspended. And one-half of all equity and bond funds currently in the endowment portfolio shall be exchanged into a money market fund. And 500,000 of the Woodbury Fund assets on a pro rata basis should be exchanged into a money market fund. So, that's the motion and the goal is simply to reduce volatility and risk in the endowment assets. At this point, there's a lot of uncertainty ahead and it seems like this is the right time to kind of reduce risk in the portfolio until things are clearer going forward.
Okay, thank you, Nat. Is there a second to Nat's motion?
I'll second.
Now, any questions?
We trust you, Nat.
I think it's a great idea.
All of us have looked at our situation, personal situation as far as this volatility. So, I appreciate your bringing this to us and certainly reducing risk in the library's investments as well as the Woodbury Fund is paramount. So, if there are no other questions?
I have a tiny question, which I could have asked of the Budget Committee, but I was too witless. How does this affect our relationship with, you know, Vanguard Mercer?
Right, so this would be, the actual transactions would be done through a instruction to Mercer. All of our assets in the endowment and Woodbury Fund are invested in Vanguard funds. So, we would give the direction to Mercer and Mercer would actually make that change in the portfolio investments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we prepared to vote on the motion? Okay, Lee?
I.
Eugene?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Farah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, that's been approved. Next, we have the Friends. Is there anyone from the Friends?
I'm here. I'm here. Yep, I don't have much to report. We have another meeting on next Tuesday, April 8. And we might have some discussion about what's been reported today from the Director about the rug being pulled out from under us a little bit. We have an ongoing discussion about fundraising. We have a pickleball event in November. We're encouraged by the fact that the annual fund is up and maybe we're hoping that people in town might respond to adversity that we might be getting from the federal government and might step up a little bit for the annual fund. I think that's all I have about what the Friends are up to. If maybe Nat or Lee might have something else, I don't know, but that's basically, it's an ongoing discussion about about the state of the project and also fundraising for the library programs. Thanks.
Okay, Rich, you haven't, the annual meeting is scheduled for June, I think, at the Munson. Is that when the trustees will join? Traditionally, join?
We would love to have. I've forgotten now what the date is. I think it's.
Yep, it's June, June 8.
June 8, okay, thank you, which is a Sunday, I believe. So, yes, that's coming up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rich, very much.
What time is the meeting?
3:00 p.m.
Thank you. Nat's got it all.
Okay, Director's Report. Sharon?
I really don't.
Thank you very much, Rich.
I don't have anything else to say other than I just, I really, again, really appreciate the staff of the library and how hard they work. And I'm always impressed at the level, the depth of the programming that they put together. And yeah, so I just want to thank them again.
Sharon, Austin asked if the staff, how the staff were feeling about all the changes in this administration, if this is stressing them out even more. He asked at a previous meeting, so.
You know, I haven't, I haven't asked them about, specifically about IMLS and the possible cuts to the MBLC. I have, you know, spoken with Lynn about the DHS grant. And she, it just so happened she's going to a conference this weekend to talk about her work on this program and how important it is and how, you know, it's all the feelings. It's everything that Farah said. It's the fact that this administration doesn't want an informed electorate and is removing any possible what? Funding for, you know, for education, for democracy, library services. It's, it makes you angry beyond belief. It makes you sad beyond belief and it's incomprehensible. I mean, I've always thanked God that I live in Massachusetts, but I feel that much more powerless in Massachusetts. Because I, I don't know, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's hard because most of our representatives and our senators are, share our values.
Exactly.
And we don't live in a state where we can lobby somebody whose values are different.
Right. Lee has her hand raised.
I do. I do. I don't want to end the meeting. We got a wonderful communication today, I think by email from the Friends that quotes from a teen user of the library and I would like to read this into the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. "Once the colder weather comes, we badly need a place to hang out after school, especially one where we don't have to spend $5 or more on bubble tea. The library renovation would give kids who don't have any space at home somewhere to be."
Yes.
Yes.
I thought that was just wonderful.
Yep. I think just to add to that, Lee, also, when you think about the summer, right? There are so many kids who don't, whose parents don't have the resources to send them to camps, to send them, you know, besides Alice, Amherst Rec. And they're the ones who use the library the most. These kids really need those spaces, the children and the teens. And I can't believe that we wouldn't do everything we could as a town, as a community to support this project more because I think we need to think outside of ourselves.
Well said.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you all and thank you for your patience with me.
You were great.
Thank you, Sharon, for all your help.
You were great, Tammy.
Have a good weekend, everybody.
You too. Happy spring.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.